Welcome to the City Council's February 8th regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present in the City Council chambers. Vice Mayor Jen Wallaceen, City Council Member Drew Combs, City Council Member Ray Mueller, interim City Manager Justin Murphy, City Clerk Judy Heron, City Council Members and Staff participating remotely, our City Council Members Cecilia Taylor, and City Attorney Neera Doherty. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, and again echoing a welcome to our February 8th regular City Council meeting. At this time, we ask for staff and members of the City Council participating to remain off-screen until you have a question or comment or making presentations for staff. For members of the public who wish to provide public comment, after the mayor calls for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press *9 to raise your virtual hand. That does conclude my introductions at this time. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council Member Reports. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? City Council Member Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I would like to pull an item off of consent.
And which one is that?
It is item G2.
Thank you. And I would like to switch the order of the water supply assessment by 3, 1350 Adams Court will come before by 2 Willow Village. I would like to introduce City Attorney Doherty for a report out from the January 25th and 28th closed sessions.
Apologies, I was having technical issues. There's no reportable action.
Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the City Council on any item under Agenda sections Consent Calendar, Public Hearing, Regular Business, Information Reports. City Clerk Heron, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press *9. This will be the final call for public comment on item E, public comment, for items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. City Clerk Heron, do we have any public comments for, on our proclamation item F1?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F1, Proclamation for Black History Month, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you may press *9 now. So final call for public comment on our proclamation F1. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Dr. Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas the 2022 national theme focuses on the importance of black health and wellness. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism everywhere, including in our own city, and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the city of Menlo Park continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all people, past, present, and future, are respected, valued equally, and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, country, and the world. And whereas the city of Menlo Park is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout the state, nation, and world. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed, I, Betsy Nash, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, hereby proclaim and celebrate February 2022 as Black History Month in Menlo Park. Thank you. The next item is Consent Calendar. Under the Consent Calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless the City Council Member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Heron, please call for public comment on the Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on tonight's Consent Calendar, G1, adopting a resolution to continue conducting the City Council and Advisory Body meetings remotely, G2, receiving and filing of the Parks and Recreation Commission Work Plan, G3, receive the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending in June of 2021, and G4, receive and file the 2021 Priorities and Work Plan Quarterly Report as of December 31st of 2021. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press *9. This will be the final call for public comment on our Consent Calendar, items G1 through Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. So G2 was pulled by Council Member Taylor. Council Member Taylor, would you like to state any concerns or comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. My request is actually that we continue this. I have some questions for staff to clarify, and it would be great to have, that they have the opportunity to follow up with me.
Interim City Manager Murphy?
Yes, I did get an opportunity to talk with the Council Member Taylor earlier today, and we think that would be the best, best approach to be able to kind of talk through some of her questions and then bring this back to the City Council.
Thank you very much. So would anyone like to move on G1, G3, and G4?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
And I will go ahead and second that.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Mueller, a second by Mayor Nash, to approve the Consent Calendar excluding item G2. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Combs.
Yes.
City Council Member Mueller.
Yes.
City Council Member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is public hearing. This public hearing is a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. Tonight's public hearing is H1, Introduce Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment to Modify Municipal Code, Chapter 16.92, Signs Outdoor Advertising, to allow increased signage for qualifying projects within the SP El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. To introduce the item is Acting Principal Planner Karina Sandmeyer.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I'm Karina Sandmeyer, Acting Principal Planner with Community Development, and so I have a presentation to share. I shall be providing an overview of a proposal to update the specific plan signage regulations. Some background, so signage is regulated by the Municipal Code, Chapter 16.92, and the sign design guidelines. The current sign regulations are designed for larger projects. Some parcels in the specific plan area that's developed before the specific plan went into effect do have more signage permitted through conditional development permits and plant development permits. One example is 7-800 El Camino Real, that's the Menlo Station Development, and also 525 El Camino Real, that's Safeway and the surrounding businesses. So within the specific plan, new CDPs and PDPs are not permitted. And so additional signage allowances needed for larger projects to be successful within the specific plan. The Planning Commission reviewed several versions of this proposal. They held two study sessions in 2021 and reviewed the proposal again in January 2022. And so the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment in front of you is based on the Planning Commission's recommendations. So the proposed regulations would modify Municipal Code, Chapter 16.92, and the language of the proposed text amendment is included in Exhibit A to Attachment A of the staff report. And so I'll give an overview of some of the highlights of the proposed regulations. So important point is they would require review of a master sign program by the Planning Commission for any project utilizing the proposed regulations, and this would be discretionary review for the Planning Commission to ensure there's a cohesive signage program. The regulations would maintain the current formula for signage area based on the length of a project's frontage. The regulations would eliminate 100 square foot cap on the total sign area for primary frontages and the 50 square foot cap for secondary frontages. The regulations would also allow half of what is permitted for El Camino Real frontages for non-El Camino Real frontages. So most of the properties downtown would likely not utilize these regulations since they would get more signage under the current regulations. The proposed regulations would also limit the maximum sign area for any frontage to 1,000 square feet regardless of the amount of frontage. And this, this limit would likely not apply to most parcels. I think one it does, one it does apply to is Stanford's 500 El Camino Real Middle Plaza Project, since they have a very large frontage along El Camino. The proposed regulations would also limit the area of any individual sign to a maximum of 50 square feet. The regulations would exempt signage of a project as well as safety and directional signage from the overall allowable display area. And for buildings with a mixture of office and other commercial uses, the regulations would limit the total display area of signs at the building top parapet level. The City Council approved the Spring Line project at 1300 El Camino Real in 2017 with project revisions approved in December 2021. This project includes 224,000 square feet of commercial uses and 183 dwelling units. And I think it provides a good overview of how the signage regulations would apply to larger projects, especially along El Camino. So under the current zoning ordinance, the project would be allowed 100 square feet of signage along ECR and 50 square feet of signage along each of the secondary frontages, and that's Oak Grove Avenue and Garwood Avenue. Under the proposed regulations, the project would be allowed 540 square feet of signage along El Camino Real, 165 square feet along Oak Grove, and 402 square feet along Garwood So recommendations and next steps, the management staff recommend that the City Council waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance approving a zoning ordinance text amendment to modify Municipal Code, Chapter 16.92, Signs Outdoor Advertising. And then the next step would be a second reading at the next regular meeting, which is March 8th. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any, are there any questions from City Council at this time? All right, let's, I believe the applicant is going to make a presentation now. Karina, can you let me know who needs to be promoted for that?
Um, yes, I believe, let's see, I believe Steve Atkinson will be taking the lead on that.
Could it possibly be Cyrus?
Um, yes, that's also possible.
Good evening, Council Members. Is my audio working?
Yes, it is.
And may I share my screen or will?
You can share your screen.
Sorry, this is slightly different than our other Planning Commission hearings.
If it's easier, I can share and you can cue me verbally through the presentation?
I, I think I just made it work if, if this is up on your screen and... Is this casting now? Or are you seeing this?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Council Members, and thank you so much for hosting us this evening. We're excited to be here in front of you to present this, hopefully, final set of approvals as it pertains not just to the Spring Line project, but as the signage ordinance impacts all other projects in the downtown specific plan area. We're delighted to be here and thank you for your time. I appreciate Ms. Sandmeyer's presentation, and to the extent that some of these slides may be repetitive, we'll quickly pass through them, and to the extent that Council Members have any questions, I'll be available following the presentation to, to address those. But as Ms. Sandmeyer alluded to, really, the goal of the amendments that we're seeking at this point is not just for the benefit of the Spring Line project, but to benefit all the projects that are within the downtown specific plan area, and specifically to address the outdated signage ordinance that hadn't really contemplated projects of, of the size that are currently under construction, both Spring Line and Middle Plaza are priming samples of those. And by way of background, our project was tasked with really pushing this forward and ended up preparing what is contained in this presentation in terms of our findings, leveraging our consultants and those of the Middle Plaza team to provide some, some additional background and additionally to go through multiple study sessions with the Planning Commission to further refine the proposed amendment that's in front of you tonight. In terms of the signage issues, really, at the heart of it is the issue rooted in the fact that a project similar to Spring Line would be limited to a total of 150 square feet of signage based on the current ordinance. And most important to note is that City Council, at the time that our project had received its approvals, had provided staff with direction to specifically address this shortcoming in the signage ordinance. And unfortunately, by the time that we were ready to pursue a master signage plan for our project, that work had yet to be completed, and so our team worked closely with staff to spearhead this effort and then coordinated with other project sponsors that would be affected as well to ensure as broad a base of stakeholders buy-in and, and again, consistency in the updates. To note, the amendment is strictly applicable to the downtown specific plan area, and most importantly, the changes that would be adopted would simply update the formula, or the various formula, to pursue signage, but that's not carte blanche for every project to then go and install signage. We would still have to go through and adhere to all the existing signage controls, guidelines, and design standards, and more importantly, would need to pursue a master signage plan application, which would go through the Planning Commission and require discretionary review as well. So an important nuance there. The key point here, and again cognizant of the Council's time in Ms. Sandmeyer's presentation, we are not proposing changes to any of the base signage standards that exist in the code today, other than the cap that restricts for our project 150 square feet of total signage in its entirety for the project. So these are just, these bullets are just a summary of all the existing controls that would remain, so no risk of potentially turning buildings into billboards or making this look like the Las Vegas Strip by any stretch of the imagination. The use of bright colors are limited and so on. All of those controls would remain, and I'm happy to, to go back to this slide if, if anyone has questions for, perhaps staff can answer any questions on, on the existing signage code. It was important for us to respond to the Planning Commission, and it had been requested that we provide a representative, a precedent study comparing Menlo Park to Redwood City and to Palo Alto, given the neighboring jurisdictions, and with the hope of creating uniformity or some semblance of consistency at least vis a vis the, the neighboring towns and cities that, that share El Camino or that, that have El Camino Real frontage as well. By point of comparison, we, in Menlo Park, would be capped at 100 square feet regardless of the linear footage of the property on the primary frontage, and then 50 square feet for secondary frontage. So in our case for Spring Line, just by way of example, that would yield 150 square feet total. By comparison, and my apologies, these are actually some precedent imagery of signage generally, both at the ground floor level, but also at the parapet level, and that's important to note, just given the, the proposed changes. And I know we've had some discussion around these items earlier today and in the, in the last few months as well. By comparison, the city of Palo Alto actually has a greater allowance of signage when you look at the ratio. So if you recall, we are capped at 100 square feet plus 50 for the secondary frontages. Here, you can see the, the formula there goes beyond the, the cap that we have here. Some other examples of, of signage in Palo Alto. In Redwood City, their ratio is actually even greater. It's one and a half square feet of signage to every one linear foot of frontage. And again, we'll show you how that compares, and just some other examples of a variety of signs at various levels of building in Redwood City. The key element of the proposed modifications really focus on the removal of that 100 square foot and 50 square foot cap. Again, we would retain all the city's rules on guidance on sign colors, lighting, and so on. We would propose a limit on each individual sign as the ordinance exists today, or the signage code exists today. Whatever a building's total allocation is, could actually be consolidated into a single sign theoretically. So we're capping that at 50 square feet per commercial sign, so that we don't have, again, disproportionate signage on buildings and, and unequal allocation of, of square footage to a particular tenant that would make one tenant look much more dominant than the other. We're further proposing limits on parapet high signage, and we'll show some examples of that. And this, these modifications really look to distinguish the difference between project identity or wayfinding. As an example, the arch that we have between our north and south buildings on El Camino, saying Spring Line is the building identity, or parking, for example, is not counting towards these limits, but rather that those limits apply really to identification of the tenants, whether those are retail or commercial. And finally, the important point being that despite these changes, one would have to adhere to the amended signage ordinance and code and propose a master signage plan for a project that would be consistent with the same and that would review, that would receive Planning Commission review and approval to ensure harmony and compatibility with the building design and the overall neighborhood that the, the building or project is located in. Given these ordinances or these changes didn't exist at the time, our original approvals were, were submitted or processed. The idea is that once this change occurs, all future projects that fall within this area would have the ability to, as part of the design review, also propose... would have the ability to, as part of the design review, also propose their master signage plan and have that approved concurrently. This is just a representative example, but it highlights that Spring Line on the archway, for example, and then the variety of ground floor retail signage and then the limited parapet sign as well. These are some more realistic examples, just showing the subtlety of the parapet level as an example. And then similarly, on the ground floor for the retail tenants as well. And this isn't, this is really just used for illustrative purposes, but showing the variety of areas that the ordinance would allow signage to go, again, dependent on the location of various retail or commercial users on the ground floor, looking to identify their primary entrances and then limiting the number of parapet signs as well, again, regardless of the total square foot allocation in the project. And with that, I do want to just touch on the fact that our team did spend an extensive amount of time conducting community outreach to ensure as broad an input as possible and broad-based acceptance of the proposal in front of you here today for consideration. And we certainly took all of that input into consideration as we worked iteratively, both with the planning commission through multiple study sessions, but also with staff and the city attorney to ensure that the proposed language of the amendment is consistent. And it works for everybody, given that this is really not Spring Line focused, but will affect all of the downtown specific plan area. And with that, I just want to thank staff and the city attorney and planning commissioners for a very in-depth and long process to get us here. And I do want to thank City Council for your consideration and am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sandaji and Mrs. Sanders Meyer. Are there any clarifying questions from City Council before we open the public hearing? All right. I would like to open the public hearing. City Clerk Heron, please call for public comments on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item H1, introduce zoning ordinance text amendments to modify the municipal code chapter sixteen point nine two signs, outdoor advertising, to allow increased signage for qualifying projects with the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. To engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen, if you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for a public comment on tonight's public hearing, item H1. And our first speaker will be Fran Dean.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on the proposed amendment to the specific plan. When the specific plan was adopted, it was clearly understood that large developments, in particular those with aggregated parcels such as Middle Plaza or Spring Line, would need review and adaptive consideration for signage. The chamber has tracked the suggested iterations, the modifications, and the outcome of the proposed amendment or the outcome being the proposed amendment during the two planning commission's study sessions. Again, the outcome of both and the suggested changes brought forth this evening are right-sized for the specific plan. Controls remain in place for review and approval. There is no risk to this because planning commission and staff remain the approval authority. We encourage council to support the amendment before you this evening. And hopefully, this will help us move forward with our two pending mixed-use developments for Menlo Park, and that is Spring Line and Middle Plaza or any others that would qualify under the specific plan. Thanks very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item H1. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and open for City Council discussion. Are there any? Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and thank you to Cyrus and everyone and staff for putting all this together. I do want to disclose that I did speak with the applicant to receive some clarification on the imagery, kind of the renderings, and he did send me some documents that were shared with the planning commission that I found very helpful to understand. For those of us not in the signage business, it can be challenging to look at those green rectangles and figure out what it would look like in real life. And so for for me, you know, the goal here from a higher level is to kind of retain a pedestrian-oriented, walkable, livable feel for Menlo Park as we grow. There's something called a strode, I believe Strong Towns coined the term, which is like those wide car-centric boulevards that have like billboards everywhere. And I think that this is doing a good job of of not lending itself to that look. And so kind of balancing that look and feel and also allowing the businesses to advertise and to have successful business. And I do think this really strikes a good balance. There's guardrails through staff and through the planning commission, through these master sign plans. And so especially given those renderings that kind of show what it looks like and we can kind of project what it could look like in other projects, I'm very comfortable with the proposed ordinance. And I just want to thank everyone involved. I know it's been a long slog and the planning commission especially having looked at this multiple times. So I'm I'm hopeful that we can move forward. And I want to also just congratulate the applicant on our tenants that he has that they've signed. It's really exciting to get some of those businesses coming to town. So good things are coming. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council member comments, questions? Or would someone like to make a motion in a second?
I move to introduce the zoning ordinance to allow this increased signage for qualifying projects within the downtown specific plan zoning district.
Councilmember Taylor, I see your hand up.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Willison and a second by City Councilmember Taylor, that the City Council waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance approving a zoning ordinance text amendment to modify the municipal code chapter sixteen point nine two signs, outdoor advertising, to allow increased signage for certain large projects within the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller.
At this time, I haven't participated in the discussion. And while I'm been informed, I don't have a conflict, legal conflict on this issue to avoid the appearance of conflict. I'm going to recuse at this time.
Thank you. City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes. The City Councilmember Mueller recused.
The next up is regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first regular business item is I1 authorize the city attorney and city manager to draft and execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Team Sheeper, Inc. for continued operation of the Burgess Pool for additional twelve additional months and direct staff to prepare a request for proposal for an aquatics operator at Burgess Pool and the future Menlo Park Community Campus Aquatic Center, now under construction and anticipated to open in summer twenty twenty three. To introduce the item is Library and Community Services Director Sean Reinhardt.
I apologize, Mayor Nash, but I actually do need to legally recuse myself from this item. So I'm going to step away from the dais for.
Mr. Reinhardt, I believe we're good to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. So tonight, we're here to discuss the aquatics service agreement and recommendation to renew it, but with some provisions. And so we'll just move right into discussion. The staff report contains more detail, of course. We'll just do a quick overview here in the presentation and then move into the discussion. So the recommendation before you tonight is to authorize the city attorney and city manager to draft and execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Team Sheeper, Inc. for continued operation of the Burgess Pool through August thirty one, twenty twenty three, or the opening of the Menlo Park Community Campus Aquatic Center, whichever comes first, and to direct staff to prepare a request for proposals or RFP for an aquatics operator at Burgess Pool and the future Menlo Park Community Campus Aquatic Center, which is now under construction and anticipated to open in summer of twenty twenty three. Just by way of background, as you all know, Team Sheeper, Inc. is the current operator of the Burgess Pool and previously was the operator of the Bell Haven Pool before it closed for construction last year. Their current agreement ends August thirty first of this year. And if there's no action, it would automatically extend for another twelve month period. But either party, either the city or Team Sheeper, could provide written notification at least one hundred eighty days in advance of that date in August of intent to amend the terms of the agreement, for example, to make programmatic changes or to change the term or as was recommended in the previous slide. So staff recommends amending the agreement to establish express terms that the extended agreement would expire on August thirty first, twenty twenty three, therefore not automatically renew or when the MPCC Aquatic Center opens, whichever comes first. Also attached to the report is attachment B. And as required by section nine of the current agreement with Team Sheeper, Inc., is an annual aquatics report to be submitted to the city by January thirtieth of each year. That is prepared by Team Sheeper, Inc. It includes program statistics, resident and non-resident participation data, customer survey results, a customer survey conducted by Team Sheeper of their existing pool users, current and projected schedules, fees by program area, fee comparisons to other area aquatic centers, certifications and other relevant data. That report is scheduled to be presented and discussed in detail at the Parks and Recreation Commission at its February twenty third regular meeting as stipulated in the aquatics agreement. And then the second part of the recommendation is to issue a request for proposals in autumn of this year, the fall, for an aquatics operator at Burgess Pool and the MPCC Aquatic Center. The start of the new agreement, should City Council direct it to be issued, would be timed to coincide with the projected opening of the MPC Aquatics, MPCC Aquatic Center, which again is tentatively scheduled to open in summer of twenty twenty three. Of course, the current aquatic service provider, Team Sheeper, Inc., would be invited and encouraged to respond to that RFP. Issuing the RFP in that timeframe in the fall would provide the city sufficient time to select the operator to negotiate an agreement and prepare for the start of operations at the new MPCC facility in summer of twenty twenty three, as well as for the ongoing operations at Burgess Pool, depending who which operator is selected. So just to sum up again, the recommendation is that the City Council authorize the city attorney and city manager to draft and execute the amendment to the agreement as as described earlier and to direct staff to prepare the request for proposals for an aquatics operator as discussed earlier. And that concludes the summary presentation and staff's available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reinhardt. City Clerk Judy Heron, please call for public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on regular business item I1, authorize the city attorney and city manager to draft and execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Tim Sheeper for continued operation of the Burgess Pool for twelve additional months and direct staff to prepare a request for proposals for an aquatic operator at Burgess Pool and the future Menlo Park Community Campus Aquatic Center, now under construction and anticipated to open in summer of twenty twenty three. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. This will be the final call for public comment on regular business item I1. And our first speaker will be Janet Davis.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to request that Mr. Sheeper be required to reinstate the program for wellness that has been going on for some time at the pool and has been now out of operation for just about two years. It's very much wanted by the senior population in the area and it's missed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment on item I1. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much. And first, I'd like to thank Ms. Davis for her comment. She's also written to council and to numerous times on this subject. And I'm wondering if either Mr. Sheeper is in available or if Mr. Reinhardt could address the question of the wellness program.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, and thank you, Ms. Davis, for your comments. I'm pleased to report that according to Tim Sheeper, who is the proprietor of Team Sheeper, Inc., they have confirmed that they will be introducing an aqua wellness therapy program. They, the program will be led by a doctor of physical therapy and backed by a physical therapy company with the intention of maintaining long-term sustainability for an aqua wellness therapy program at the Burgess Pool. They're in the final stages of operational logistics and partnership agreements to finalize that. It's taken a little bit of time to work through all those details in part because of Omicron and some of the COVID considerations that prevented it from moving as quickly as I think everyone had hoped. But my understanding is that they confirmed just this week that they will be moving forward with that model. Aquatic partnerships with physical therapy providers are relatively rare. So it's actually kind of an extraordinary, unique and innovative step forward for providing this kind of service in Menlo Park at the Burgess Pool. So it's very promising and we really look forward to it launching on March first is their target date.
Thank you for that very detailed update. So let's open for a City Council discussion. Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I actually have a follow-up question for Mr. Reinhardt about the wellness program. Because we have received quite a few emails. Because we have received quite a few emails and concerns from wellness participants. So, and I don't know if you have this information, but while it's exciting to hear about the PT program, I know when I once did PT, you have to have like a doctor's note, and it's kind of, it's not just like dropping into a class. So do you have any information for those participants who are eager to get back in the pool and this, like how that will work? Or if you don't have that information, when could they find out that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Those are great questions. I have some preliminary information there. I know that the program is still under development, so all the details haven't been finalized. But I was able to confirm with Mr. Sheper that the intent really is that no referrals would be necessary. The classes would be open to any and all. Their initial plan is to have two classes on Tuesday or similar day of the week and two more on Thursday. So starting with four classes per week. I believe they want to kind of like pair it, like have it immediately following the existing water exercise program. Again, some of these details may change, but that's kind of preliminarily where they are with it. So hopefully that helps answer some of the questions that are out there, which will be answered in much more detail soon as the program is announced.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Just to follow up, do you know if pricing for those classes will be comparable to what they were before? And then while we're on the subject of wellness and, you know, obviously it's important to us that the pool is accessible to people of all ages and abilities. And I know people have been writing in also about the ADA accessibility with the doorways. So if you could speak to both the pricing of the wellness classes, if you have that information, and then when we can expect the doors to be modified so that people can use, get in and out without a problem.
Yeah, also great questions. Thank you for those. I do know that the pricing hasn't been set yet. Obviously, it needs to be finalized soon. I do know that the pool operator is very aware of the sensitivities around pricing at the municipal pool. And certainly in their current agreement, you know, the intent is for the pricing to be consistent with, you know, comparable with the prices that are, you know, set at other area pools. So I would expect, you know, the final pricing to kind of reflect that. And of course, we did have that the previous program. Of course, that was a few years ago now. You know, which people obviously can kind of compare to, you know, with the pricing then, kind of depending on what are the features of the program and so forth. But, you know, I think that's the general sort of intent there. But again, final pricing has not been set. Regarding the Burgess Pool lobby, like physical facility itself, such as the doors, the city council has approved in the capital improvement plan for 2022, 2023, upgrades to the Burgess Pool lobby, and those would include, of course, the doors. There is no specific timeline yet for exactly, you know, where that work would happen in sequence during that fiscal year. It will depend on the capital improvement project approval, which will come to the city council later this year and be taken effect in July. But it is on the calendar to have the improvement this year.
Thank you very much. Any other city council members' comments? Vice Mayor Willison.
I just love the pool. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. So I just have a request for the RFP. I think it's really good that as we look forward with the Menlo Park Community Campus and just really giving the community an opportunity to have a way to weigh in on what they kind of want out of our community pool, that the RFP is a great opportunity to do that. So I would just, I would really look forward to potentially like a survey. I know Mr. Sheper does a survey of his swimmers, but kind of a larger community survey, because I know there's people that have contacted me that they don't actually swim because of the hours or the pricing or whatnot. So getting a broader group of respondents for a survey to help inform that RFP and then also potentially bringing that together with a study session, kind of like we did with the, I don't know if it was a study session, but I know before we issued the Quiet Zone, we kind of had an RFP, this Quiet Stone Study, we had an RFP so that those stakeholders that really want to weigh in can do so. So if you have any thoughts about kind of that kind of outreach prior to doing this RFP, because it does seem like kind of a milestone moment for us to kind of evaluate where we're at with the pool.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, let me echo that it truly is an exciting moment in Menlo Park to be constructing a new multi-service community center with a new aquatic center. It does present an incredible opportunity to, you know, move our aquatics program forward to serve all of the community. Regarding, you know, conducting a community-wide survey in preparation for the issuance of an RFP and to come back to the city council with a study session, you know, in advance of the RFP being released, certainly would fall within the realm of best practices for preparing for it and forming an RFP. So should the city council approve the recommended action tonight and give that direction to staff, it would be absolutely appropriate and again, a best practice to incorporate those two elements into the process.
Thank you. And I guess I would add to that, just it seems that the balancing in all of our community services is always somewhat the teams using the fields or the pool versus the open access and just whatever we can do in the survey, assuming we go ahead with that to sort of query a little bit more as to how best to balance that would be beneficial. Thank you. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Second, oh, I'm sorry, I'll second that. A friendly amendment to add in per staff's recommendation, some kind of outreach study session, a way to weigh in on the RFP prior to its issuance.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll second that.
Councilmember Combs.
I think Councilmember Taylor has her hand up.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I had a question. So we're voting on this all in one, not two separate?
I would love some help from either the city manager or city clerk.
So currently, I see it as one motion. I can read that just for clarity.
That would be good. And then we'll ask Councilmember Taylor what her preferences.
Of course. So the motion by City Councilmember Combs and second by Vice Mayor Willison is to authorize the city attorney and city manager to draft and execute an amendment to the professional services agreement between the city of Menlo Park and Team Sheper to extend the term of the agreement through August 31 of 2023 or the opening of the MPCC Aquatic Center, whichever comes first, and direct staff to prepare a request for proposals to be issued in autumn of 2022 and to which Team Sheper would be invited and encouraged to respond for an aquatics operator at Burgess Pool and the future MPCC Aquatic Center with said operator agreement to become effective at both locations when the latter opens to the public and directing staff to schedule a study session on outreach before the release of the RFP.
Councilmember Taylor.
I am interested in voting yes on one part and no on the other.
City Clerk Karen, can, well, actually, I guess the motion maker.
I think the city attorney has something to say.
I was just going to offer that you can certainly split the motion into two if you wanted to bifurcate the vote on what's before you.
Thank you very much.
I'm fine with bifurcating, so I just have to know what we're bifurcating. The part about renewing the agreement with Sheper until, or continuing that is one part, and then the outreach connected to the RFP is another part, correct? And so I'll move.
Actually, I think the second part is the request for proposal. With the friendly amendment of the.
Yeah, the RFP is the second part, right? Yeah. And so, and so I'll amend my motion just to move on the extension of the agreement with Sheper. So that's what I'll put on the table, and then we'll vote on that and then, or if it gets a second.
Yeah, I'll second that. And I do, can I say something? I do want to acknowledge that, that right now, I think it's, it's, I'm excited that we're going to be going out for an RFP. I think right now, I think that Sheper has gotten us through COVID, and I I know that there's a larger discussion to be had about the pool, given our constraints with staffing and just where we're at right now with the pandemic and everything. And, you know, Sheper has, you know, carried it through this pandemic, which is pretty amazing. So I am supportive of renewing, and I especially appreciate staff putting in this piece about the RFP with this item as well, so we can have a larger conversation about the pool. So with all that, I'm seconding. Thanks.
Thank you. So the amended motion on the floor by City Councilmember Combs and second by Vice Mayor Willison is to authorize the city attorney and city manager to draft and execute an amendment to the professional services agreement between the city of Menlo Park and Team Sheper to extend the term of the agreement through August 31, 2023, or the opening of the MPCC Aquatic Center, whichever comes first. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs, and voting no.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
And Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Taylor abstaining and City Councilmember Mueller recused.
I believe City Councilmember Taylor voted no.
So sorry. So the motion passes with City Councilmember Taylor dissenting and City Councilmember Mueller recused.
Perfect. Thank you. Would you like to make the second motion?
Yeah, I did. I'll make the motion. I did have a question, and maybe this is more for council than staff. Maybe it's for both. So this RFP, the RFP process and sort of a survey and community engagement, is part of this, are we going to ask an analysis from staff of the city taking over running of the pools? Is that, is that an option? Because I think from what I, I just think that some of the concerns that have been expressed are probably going to recur with any vendor. And so one way to at least possibly address them is to look at what the option of the city running it. And then, and then we have control that we don't have now. And so I just, I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, but I do want to say that like, I think that if that is a real concern, then I think that that option has to be looked at because I think we'll run into some of the same issues with, with any other operator.
I think that's a very good observation. In turn, City Manager Murphy, would you care to comment?
I would like to confirm with our Library and Community Services Director, and I think he's going to come on screen now. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. That's certainly something that can be done and would also be a best practice, just so that council has the complete picture of what are the options, you know, in advance of issuing an RFP, so we can take that as direction from the council.
Okay, so then, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Councilmember Combs, I'm used to saying, Councilmember Combs, I appreciate you bringing that up. I, and I noticed on the Parks and Rec work plan, which we are deferring, I think there's an item about keeping things in-house versus privatizing, because it has to do with gymnastics also. So it would be great if Parks and Rec can start chewing on that. And I don't have a answer one way or the other, but I think it is, if possible, worth exploring if we can do so in the timeframe necessary. So thank you.
Councilmember Combs, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, so then I'll move on an RFP for operating both the Burgess and Menlo Park Community Center pools at the end of the current agreement with Sheper. That will, one, involve a survey and community outreach, and that will, two, at least have the option or an analysis of the city taking over direct management of pool operations.
And the study session with part of the community. Okay, great. I will second that. Thanks, Mayor Combs. Councilmember Combs.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Combs and a second by Vice Mayor Willison to direct staff to repair an RFP, including outreach and in-house management options to be issued in autumn of 2022 and to which Team Sheper would be invited and encouraged to respond for an aquatics operator at Burgess Pool and the future MPCC Aquatic Center with said contractor agreement becoming effective at both locations when the latter opens to the public, and also direct staff to schedule a study session on outreach before the release of the RFP. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Mueller recused.
Thank you very much, and we will wait just a minute for Councilmember Mueller to come back in. Right.
So thank you. I just need to clarify. I had to recuse myself on that item because my son had a summer job at the pool. So there you go.
Thank you for that clarification. Fascinating. So the next regular business item, we are actually going to take I-3 ahead of I-2. So the next regular business item is consider and adopt a resolution approving the water supply assessment for the 1350 Adams Court Project. To introduce the item is Acting Principal Planner Tom Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Nash and City Councilmembers. I have a brief presentation that I will share with you. So this is a presentation on the 1350 Adams Court Water Supply Assessment Project. And I will briefly go through the purpose of the meeting, the proposed project that is behind the water supply assessment, the projected water demand of the project, water supply availability in the municipal water district, and some corrections to the water supply assessment, followed by a recommendation. So the purpose of the meeting is to consider a water supply assessment for the 1350 Adams Court Project. And for this item, council is acting as the governing body for the Menlo Park Municipal Water, which I'll just refer to as municipal water from here on out. And the WSA is required because the proposed project includes more than 250,000 square feet of office uses, or in this case, life science, R and D uses, falls under the same category. And the WSA evaluates whether there's sufficient water supply available during normal years, during single dry years, and then in multiple dry years to meet the projected demand. and then in multiple dry years to meet the projected demand of the project over a twenty-year period through twenty forty. And the WSA is also accounting not just for the project, but for planned growth throughout the entire service area of municipal water. So just to make sure we're clear on what the WSA approval would mean, um, it is not committing the city to serve water to the proposed project. It's not considering and/or endorsing the merits of the project itself, and it's not approving the project. What it does is allows the city to incorporate the document into the project environmental impact report, the EIR. And under the California Environmental Quality Act, um, it requires the governing body, body of the water system, in this case, city council, um, that would be supplying water to the project to determine whether the project projected water demand was included in the most recent urban water management plan, which in this case was adopted in uh, twenty twenty. And also prepare a water assessment to be adopted at a regular or special meeting of the governing body. So a little bit about the proposed project. It, the site for thirteen fifty Adams Court, it is zoned life science with the potential for bonus development. It's on an eleven point two acre parcel that contains an existing R and D building. And then there's an undeveloped portion of the site that's four point four acres in size. And so uh, the project would be construction of two hundred sixty thousand four hundred square feet, uh, up to two hundred sixty thousand four hundred square feet of additional life science R and D uses, and the existing building on the site would remain. So I have a, a, a picture here, a rendering of the proposed building. Um, you can see that it is five levels and uh, includes all of the, the, the requirements to meet our zoning ordinances. The floor area ratio um, for the entire site, including the existing and proposed building, would be ninety point seven percent, where a hundred and twenty-five percent uh, FAR is, is permitted. And this project would be located in the lower zone of the municipal water service area. So for the project, um, it does incorporate conservation measures, and that includes a number of things. Uh, there's water efficient fixtures and equipment that would be installed. There would be drip irrigation and drought tolerant landscaping among, among other measures. And uh, the project would also be installing purple pipe, which would allow it to connect to a recycled water source when it becomes available in the area. Uh, the estimated water demand after incorporating these conservation measures would be four point eight two million gallons per year. And the project that uh, is proposed is within the permitted cumulative development totals that were studied in the Connect Menlo General Plan Update, in the Connect Menlo Water Supply Evaluation and EIR, and in the Municipal Water uh, twenty fifteen and twenty twenty urban water management plans. So here's a table from the WSA, um, and you can see in green here that, as I mentioned, four point eight million gallons, uh, which is rounded up here to five, would be the potable water demand from the project. Uh, under Connect Menlo, the total potable water demand at buildout was uh, set at three hundred forty-three million gallons per year. So after factoring in the project, um, there would be three hundred and thirty-eight million gallons per year remaining water, uh, potable water demand for other projects in Connect Menlo Study Area. And so if we take into account the other projects in the area that were recently approved or in the planning stages, um, they have a combined water demand of about one hundred and twenty point seven million gallons. Um, so factoring all of these projects in together, there would still be about roughly two hundred seventeen million gallons of water remaining for other bayfront projects that were studied under Connect Menlo. So after talking about demand, I'll switch over now to water supply availability. So municipal water purchases all potable water from the regional water system that's operated by San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. And municipal water has an individual supply guarantee from SFPUC of one billion six hundred thirty million gallons per year, um, and that agreement goes through two thousand thirty-four. Um, the reliability of the water supply would be affected in drought years by the two thousand eighteen Bay Delta Amendment, um, and whether or not that, that amendment gets implemented. And so a little bit of information about the Bay Delta Amendment, it would require the release of forty percent of the unimpaired flow of three San Joaquin River tributaries to increase fish populations each year from February through June. Um, and so because of that, uh, additional flow that would be left in rivers, it would affect the reliability of water supply um, to all of the, all of the purchasers from the regional water system. So the WSA for this project evaluates findings for a scenario where the Bay Delta Plan would be implemented and one where it would not be implemented. Um, and I would add that the municipal water uh, urban management plan for twenty twenty does assume that the Bay Delta Plan would be implemented starting next year. So this is table two, which is taken from the staff report, and I'll quickly walk through the columns here. So under this scenario where implementation of the Bay Delta Plan Amendment would occur um, during a normal year, a sufficient ply would exist to serve the project. Um, during a single dry year, if the Bay Delta Plan Amendment was implemented, there would be twenty-seven to thirty-two percent uh, reductions in water usage required. If there were multiple dry years of drought, uh, then the reductions would increase from two twenty-seven to forty-four percent. Um, and in order to respond to those shortfalls, uh, municipal water would implement the Water Shortage Contingency Plan up to level five. And so a little bit about the Water Shortage Con- Contingency Plan, um, that was adopted by city council along with the twenty twenty urban water management plan in May of twenty twenty-one. And that is how municipal water would address supply uh, shortfalls. And so the plan has six levels um, of increasing actions, and it begins with a level one, um, when there's an up to ten percent shortage. And then it goes all the way up to a level six, which is when there's a gradi- greater than fifty percent shortage in water availability. So some measures that, just as examples, that could be implemented would be increased public outreach, um, focusing on the top thirty percent of water users in each customer category. There could be limitations on irrigation. There could be uh, limits on the use of potable water for pools, for washing vehicles, uh, things like that. Drought surcharges, um, halting connections, uh, and, and other measures. And at level five, municipal water would utilize the emergency supply well that was recently constructed. So the second scenario would be if there is no Bay Delta Plan Amendment implementation, and in normal years, then sufficient supply would exist. During a single dry year, there would also be sufficient supply. Um, and then in multiple dry years, uh, there would be a sixteen point five percent reduction required in the fourth and fifth consecutive year of drought, um, but much less than if the Bay Delta Plan were implemented. And that would be specific during the, the five-year uh, window for out to twenty forty-five. Um, and so under that, under that scenario, the implementation of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan would go up to a shortage level of two, uh, which is less significant, less uh, severe than level five. And so uh, would incorporate some of the, the measures that I had uh, mentioned in talking about the implementation, the scenario with the implementation of the Bay Delta Plan Amendment. So I would like to note that there are a couple of corrections from the uh, WSA that was published and with the staff report in the packet. And uh, the final uh, updated WSA, it was noted that um, under the twenty forty column in the originally published uh, table seven point two, which is on page twenty-seven, it understates the amount of water supply that would be available with the Bay Delta Plan Amendment implementation from the second through fifth consecutive dry years. Um, and so under that column that's here in red, uh, this reddish-orange color, color. Under the second through fifth consecutive multiple dry years, uh, they're listed as having a projected water supply of eight hundred twenty-seven million gallons, but the correct water supply amounts that you can see here in the green box under the revised table seven point two um, would be nine hundred twenty-seven million gallons in the second and third consecutive dry years, and then eight hundred and thirty-two million gallons in the fourth and fifth consecutive dry years. So the water supply is actually a bit larger in those years than it was in the, than was stated in the published uh, report. And then a second correction to make is in table eight point one, which is on page thirty. That carries over the incorrect amounts that I just described from table seven one, and so that uh, as a result, overstates the shortfalls in the second through fifth consecutive dry years in the twenty forty uh, window. And so you can see here in the reddish-orange box, um, the second through fifth consecutive multiple dry years are listed as having a projected water supply of eight hundred and twenty-seven million gallons, which results in a deficit of six hundred fifty-six million gallons in each year. The correct water supply amounts in, in green on the, the right um, are nine hundred and twenty-seven million gallons in the second and third consecutive dry years, with a demand deficit of five hundred fifty-seven million gallons in both of those years, and a supply of eight hundred and thirty-two million gallons in the fourth and fifth consecutive dry years, with a demand deficit of six hundred fifty-two million gallons. And so that would uh, as I mentioned, it overstates the shortfalls, so they would be slightly less than what was in the uh, the published staff report packet. So looking back at the information that uh, was provided in the presentation, staff is recommending that uh, the city council adopt a resolution approving the WSA for the thirteen fifty Adams Court Project and incorporate the changes that I just read into the record through this presentation. And again, I would, I would remind uh, staff or remind listeners and the city council that approval of the WSA does not mean approval of the proposed project. It is uh, simply a step to uh, move forward with the environmental review for the project. And so with that, I will close my presentation. I'm available for any clarifying questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. And just a comment on the very last slide, it said that, um, it was incorrect. It said that it does, it should say that it does not um, imply approval of the project.
That is correct.
Thank you. Um, City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on item I three, consider and adopt a resolution approving the water supply assessment for the thirteen fifty Adams Court Project. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item I three. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much, and uh, this item is now open for city council discussion. Vice Mayor Willison.
This is a question for staff. Um, it looks um, like the applicant is putting in purple piping for non-potable water for the day that comes where that is available. Is that in our code, or are they doing that voluntarily?
I believe that that is a voluntary action. I'm sorry, sorry, actually, it is a, it is a required action under our, under our zoning group.
Okay, so Connect Menlo requires um, developments to put in purple piping?
Under the uh, life sciences zoning regulations, it would be required uh, as a measure there.
Um, so I guess my follow-up for staff is um, as we add more development, um, and if, if we're interested in making purple piping a requirement, what, what would that look like? Um, and I realize we might not have the ability to do anything about it. It's kind of reminds me of that metaphor of like, they built the tracks over the Alps between like Switzerland and Italy or something, or Austria before they had the train, because they knew it would come kind of thing, like if we wanted to build that in.
So it, it is a requirement under um, all of the zoning districts that are in the bayfront area. Um, the residential mixed-use district, life sciences, and office districts do require uh, this measure. And so they would be uh, sort of primed and ready in the event that it becomes available, recycled water, that is.
Um, but that's only the bayfront, not citywide?
Right.
I guess my question is, I mean, on the one hand, we're trying to incentivize housing. Um, but I am, I, I am aware that, you know, our, our water supply in the future of the dry years, um, this seems like, uh, we don't want to make it harder to build, but um, what would it look like if we were interested in purple piping in the downtown specific plan area, for example?
So, Public Works Director Nikki Nagaya, I'll turn it over to her. She's, she's come on the screen here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson, for the questions. Um, so I think one of the, the things that we also need to think about in terms of development across the city is the water supplier. And so I think this is, this action tonight is before you because the projects that are proposed are in the Menlo Park Municipal Water um, Service Area. A lot of the downtown specific plan areas served by Cow Water. Um, and so i- in the, in addition to that, there are a couple other water service providers throughout the city. So if we're looking at a citywide ordinance, I think we also need to engage with um, the, the other water suppliers, um, as well as the potential um, water suppliers for recycled water. Uh, so we're coordinating now closely with West Bay Sanitary Sewer District that's providing recycled water um, to the Sharon Heights Gulf and Country Club is one inbuilt example. And then also um, looking at a, a, a plant that they're proposing to construct uh, to serve the bayfront area. Uh, but we would need to just coordinate with uh, those other water providers in West Bay to ensure that they have adequate supply to serve a larger section of the city, um, or, or citywide uh, before we can give you a firm answer on, on the availability. But um, that, that's certainly a strategy that um, to put in place with Connect Menlo and a lot of um, cities are pursuing with expanded development and, and looking at recycled water to help reduce the, the potable water use uh, across the, the, um, the spectrum of development.
Thank you very much. Are there other city council member questions? Would someone like to um, make a motion in a second? I will go ahead and um, move.
I'll second.
City Clerk Karen, could you please state the motion and call for a vote?
Thank you, um, Mayor Nash. So at this time, I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Nash, and the second was by city council member Combs. Is that correct? Thank you. To adopt a resolution approving the water supply assessment prepared for the thirteen fifty Adams Court Project, also incorporating the changes presented in uh, the presentation this evening. Any further city council questions or discussions? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Combs.
Yes.
City Council Member Mueller.
Hat trick. So this is the last time this evening, but I haven't participated in discussion on a side.
Hat trick. So this is the last time this evening, but I haven't participated in discussion on this item. I'm informed there's no legal conflict on this item, however, due in proximity in time to a campaign contribution to avoid the appearance of conflict, I'm going to recuse.
Thank you, City Council Member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Council Member Mueller recused. Thank you.
Thank you. The next regular business item is I two, consider and adopt resolution approving the water supply assessment for the Willow Village Mixed Use Master Plan Project. Councilmember Combs.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and so I have to recuse myself from this matter. One of the development entities behind the Willow Village project is Meta Platforms, and Meta Platforms is also my employer, so I'll be recused from this matter.
Thank you. To introduce this item is Acting Planning Manager Kyle Perata.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Nash and members of the city council. I'm Kyle Perata, Acting Planning Manager. I have a brief presentation as well. It's it's similar to the presentation that was just shared for the thirteen fifty Adams Court Project. So I will skip over some of the background information for brevity here, but certainly have the slides available and can definitely answer any questions as a relation to this project. So with that, let's see. So so once again, just to outline real quick, just like Tom Smith did, we'll go through the meeting purpose at a high level and we'll focus more on the proposed project, the Willow Village Master Mixed Use Master Plan Project, as well as the projected water demand for that project specifically. I'll discuss water supply availability at a high level since that was also talked about in Tom Smith's presentation. Similar, the same corrections, excuse me, for the two tables in the water supply assessment for the Willow Village Project or from the Adams Court Project are also in the Willow Village Project. I'll read them into the record, though, and then go through the recommendation. So so once again, the council here is the governing body of the Menlo Park Municipal Water. And so right here, we're we're considering a water supply assessment for the Willow Village Mixed Use Master Plan. And I think I'm being told that I'm showing the wrong screen. I'm sorry. Let me just move. One second, apologies. Okay, are we at the presentation now?
Very good.
Okay, sorry about that, trying out two screens for the first time with the presentation, my apologies. All right, so I I I'll skip over this slide I just walked through, the meeting purpose slide. And then I'll go into the meeting purpose here, which is where I was, so apologies for the rough start there. So before the the council as the governing body of the Menlo Park Municipal Water Department is the consideration of the water supply assessment for the Willow Village Mixed Use Master Plan. Just like the thirteen fifty Adams Court Project, this WSA evaluates whether there's sufficient water supply is available during the normal single dry and multiple dry years to meet this project's demand over a twenty-year period. It does account for the planned growth in the service area, including Connect Menlo general plan update and the two thousand and twenty urban water management plan. Just to reiterate, as with the previous presentation, approving the WSA tonight would not commit the city to serve water to the proposed project, would not consider and or endorse the merits of the proposed project and would not obligate the council to approve the project. So once again, approving the WSA would allow the city to incorporate this document into the project-level environmental impact report. As we are preparing a full EIR for this project. And so if the council was to approve the WSA tonight, that would be included in the environmental impact report analysis specifically for water supply, water quality, and hydrology. So the the California Environmental Quality Act, as Tom Smith mentioned, requires the council to, or excuse me, the governing body that would supply water to the project needs to determine whether the project did wire demand is included in the most recent urban water management plan, which this is, and prepare water supply assessment per the California Water Code. So this project here, just by way of background, it's a comprehensive redevelopment of the approximately fifty-nine acre project site, commonly referred to as the former Prologis site or Willow Village site of currently occupied by Facebook or excuse me, Meta. The site is zoned with two different zoning districts, the O Office Bonus and the Residential Mixed Use. The proposed project would redevelop the site with up to seven one thousand seven hundred and thirty dwelling units, up to one hundred and ninety-three hotel rooms, and up to two hundred and thousand square feet of retail. It would also include a one point six million square foot campus district that would be up to one point two five million square feet of office for use by Meta and up to three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of accessory use, meeting and collaboration space if the office uses maximized. Throughout the campus, there would be approximately twenty acres of open space, including approximately eight acres of publicly accessible open space. As with the thirteen fifty Adams Court next door, this project is located in the lower zone of the Menlo Park Municipal Water Service Area. The the project itself does also include the realignment of Hamilton Avenue, which would result in the potential or the potential reconstruction of the Chevron Service Station and a possible expansion on the North Parcel, the Bellhaven Neighborhood Shopping Center. Those two actions are also included in this water supply assessment. And so like I just mentioned, this water supply assessment does incorporate the usage on the Hamilton Avenue parcels. It also incorporates four project variants that are being studied through the environmental impact analysis. And so I have another slide that I'll share in a second that shows those variants, variants, excuse me, for the council's benefit. This project would utilize recycled water. The the plan is to have the project utilize West Bay Sanitary District Bayfront Recycled Water Project. As a variant, we are studying through the environmental review a potential onsite recycle water treatment plant if the Bayfront Recycled Water Project does not move forward. With the recycled water accounted for, the estimated potable water demand for the project is eighty-five million gallons per year. And so just to clarify those four variants that I mentioned, we looked at or we're looking at through the environmental review an increase in residential density of up to two hundred additional units, as well as some possible situations where the Hamilton Avenue right away isn't realigned. There's no potential tunnel to the from the west campus to the project site, and then also studying that onsite recycled water treatment facility. In reviewing that, it was determined that the increased residential density project would be the most water-intensive variant. And so that was studied in the water supply assessment to cover that potential variant, which will also be folded into the environmental impact report as a variant to the project. So with that, the potable water for the project with the more intensive water usage variant is eighty-five million gallons, like I mentioned before, and you can see that in the second column with variant one. So once again, the the water demand is within the project is within the Connect Menlo General Plan Update growth and as well as the Connect Menlo Water Supply Evaluation that was prepared alongside the EIR for the Connect Menlo General Plan Update. And then this project is also considered in the two thousand and twenty urban water management plan prepared by Menlo Park Municipal Water and adopted last spring. Table, the table here on the screen, it does show the Connect Menlo's total potable water demand to build out three hundred and forty-three million gallons. It should be noted that that doesn't account for any recycled water for non-potable uses. And in this case, the project itself would would use approximately fifty-five million gallons of recycled water, so eighty-five million gallons is the net increase in potable water demand from the project. As with Tom's mention in the previous presentation, we are accounting for the other projects in the area, approximately two hundred and seventeen million gallons of potable water would be available affecting in the the current and planned projects in the Bayfront area. So I'll try to go through this slide quickly since Tom Smith also also went through it. But, you know, the the Menlo Park Municipal Water does purchase its water from the regional water system. We have a individual supply guarantee of one thousand six hundred and thirty million gallons. That does include the Connect Menlo water usage. The the reliability of the water is heavily dependent on the two thousand and eighteen Bay Delta Plan Amendment. As mentioned previously, that that amendment would require forty percent of the unimpaired flow of the San Joaquin River tributaries. It hasn't been implemented at this time, but the two thousand and twenty urban water management plan does include or does assume the implementation of it in in our findings for water supply over the next twenty years. And so we do in the water supply assessment here for this project also include a scenario with and without the Bay Delta Plan. A similar table to the previous presentation, you know, essentially in the normal years and single dry year with no Bay Delta Plan, there is sufficient water supply. There would be a shortfall in multiple dry years under the no Bay Delta Plan Amendment scenario. And then in the implementation of the Bay Delta Plan, there is sufficient water supply in normal dry years to serve this project. And then there would need to be reductions or there would be shortfalls and needed reductions in the single and multiple dry years under implementation of the Bay Delta Plan. Actions to address those shortfalls were listed previously, but but for the benefit of of the council again and members of the public, the Menlo Park Municipal Water does address shortfalls through water demand reductions as part of the adopted water shortage contingency plan that was adopted alongside their more management plan this spring of last year. There are six levels of actions, the first being public outreach with a focus on top water users, the top thirty percent. And then following that, limits on irrigation, limits on potable water use for for activities like swimming pools, vehicle washing, also the potential for drought surcharges, and the utilization of the emergency supply well at level five. Once again, the same corrections for this water supply assessment as we're identifying the thirteen fifty Adams Court Water Supply Assessment, table seven two on page thirty-eight of this staff report underestimates or understates the amount of the water supply that would be available with the Bay Delta Plan from the second to fifth consecutive dry years in two thousand and forty. Quickly going through it, table seven two on the left shows eight hundred and twenty-seven million gallons available in the second, third, fourth, and fifth dry year under the Bay Delta Plan. But it's actually nine hundred and twenty-seven in the first or the second and third dry year, excuse me, and eight hundred and thirty-two million gallons in the fourth and fifth consecutive dry years. As with the Adams Court WSA, table eight one in the in the WSA did carry through those incorrect amounts. That's on page forty-one of the packet. Those do overstate the shortfalls in the second and fifth consecutive dry year. And and for the record, I'll just I'll just read them through as high as quickly as possible. But in the second dry year, the nine hundred, it's nine hundred and twenty-seven million gallons available, not eight hundred and twenty-seven million. That's actually a shortfall of thirty-eight percent and not forty-four percent. In the third dry year, it's nine hundred and twenty-seven million gallons and not eight hundred and twenty-seven million gallons. That's also a thirty-eight percent shortfall and not a forty-four percent shortfall. In the fourth year, it drops to eight hundred and thirty-two million gallons available and not eight hundred and twenty-seven that are identified in the table and staff report. That's a forty-four percent shortfall that that doesn't that doesn't change. And then in the fifth year, it's eight hundred and thirty-two million gallons, again, not eight hundred and twenty-seven million gallons, also with a forty-four percent shortfall. So the recommendation tonight by staff is to is for the council to adopt a resolution approving the water supply assessment for the proposed Willow Village Mixed Use Master Plan Project, incorporating the changes that staff has read into the record through the presentation tonight. Once again, to reiterate some statements from earlier in the presentation, approving the water supply assessment tonight would not commit the city to serve water to the proposed project and would not consider this an endorsement of the merits of the proposed project or obligate the council to approve the proposed project at a future date. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perata. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for a public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I two, consider and adopt resolution approving the water supply assessment for the Willow Village Mixed Use Master Plan Project. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item I two. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much, and we are now open for a city council discussion. Does anyone want to start us off? Vice Mayor Wilson.
I have another question of staff. As Mr. Perata was mentioning, the level five conservation effort, if needed, he referenced emergency wells or emergency water supply. And I know in the staff report, it referenced that those projects are continuing to be developed. And I think the one in the courtyard might be done, but there's another site that needs to be identified or what have you. Can is there any update on that? Thanks.
Yeah, so so the the courtyard well is come is recently completed, so that that would be available for other sites and other potential well projects. I'd want to turn to the Public Works Department to Nikki to bail me out.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. Yes, as Kyle stated, the emergency well that was recently constructed in the courtyard, the constructions complete, we're still awaiting permits from the state to be able to use the the well for emergency supply purposes, but the the construction is substantially complete at this time. In terms of other sites that the city had identified, we've gone through in the past site feasibility analyses and looked at a number of different sites. Most recently, I believe the the update we provided the council was a report on potentially partnering with the seminary, which did not end end up as a feasible site at this point in time. I've also had conversations with Menlo Park Fire Protection District. And I think the last remaining site on our list right now is the potential to look at a reservoir underground and a potential well at Willow Oaks Park. So I think that's that's one that's remaining on the list. We're currently working on a review of the water system master plan and then plan to bring forward information to the council about how we would propose to move forward with that project and and to look at whether Willow Oaks is a viable option. So that would be later this year.
Thank you, Ms. Nagai, for that date. I don't have any other questions or comments.
Thank you. Any other council member questions or comments? Or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Councilmember Taylor.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Mueller and a second by City Council Member Taylor to adopt a resolution approving the water supply assessment prepared for the Willow Village Mixed Use Master Plan Project and incorporating changes right into the record through the presentation. Any further city council question or discussions? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Mueller.
Yes.
City Council Member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Council Member Combs recused.
Thank you very much. The Rex, actually, we will wait for a minute while Councilmember Combs comes back to the chambers. Welcome back. The next regular business item is I four. Consider one modifications to the composition and charge of the Housing Element Community Engagement and Outreach Committee. And two, the use of community based organization to supplement the housing elements updates, community outreach and engagement efforts. To introduce this item is Assistant Community Development Director Deanna Chow.
Good evening, Mayor Nash and members of the city council. I just have a brief presentation for you this evening, which I'll go ahead and get started. Great. So again, this evening, we're here tonight to continue the conversation that the city council started a few weeks ago to discuss the role and composition of the Housing Element Community Engagement and Outreach Committee, also known as the CIOC, and then also discuss the use of a community based organization. So just a quick, brief background again. So as part of the Housing Element Update, the city council established the CIOC in April of 2021 as an advisory group to help focus on community engagement and outreach for the Housing Element Update. And that also includes the Housing Element, the Safety Element, and the Environmental Justice Element. The primary roles and responsibilities of the committee is to serve as an ambassador of the project, to help guide and provide feedback on our community engagement and outreach process and to serve as a community resource. It was established as a 14 member body, 13 members of which were filled. Currently, there are eight members remaining and no members are currently present from District One. So the staff report outlines a few different options that are outlined here numbered one through five for the city council to consider what the future charge of the C O C could be. The options range from maintaining the C O C in its current charge to dissolving the committee as a formal committee and to also listen to other items that the city council may wish to consider this evening. And any of these items, we do believe that the use of a community, a community based organization would benefit and strengthen our community engagement. And we would like this to be considered as part of any of the options. In terms of the size and composition, if the council would like to pursue options one and two that were on the previous slide, which maintained the C O C, there are a few things to consider. So at the last meeting, Mayor Nash and Councilmember Taylor were supported by the city council to reach out to each of the C O C members to discuss whether or not there was interest in continuing on in the committee. Six of those members had expressed interest in remaining and of that there of that there were six, so six members, none of those who were present in District One. So in terms of options for the number and composition, the city council can consider maintaining a 14 member body, which has some challenges in terms of recruitment and the timeliness of our engagement that we wish to pursue. There's an option to reduce the member to an eight member bodies, so that would be consisting of the six members who had expressed interest and identifying to District One representatives. And then we could also consider other options as discussed by the city council this evening. In terms of recruitment for District One, staff would recommend that Councilmember Taylor would identify interested participants, which would be then appointed by the full city council at a future meeting. So again, this evening to continue the conversation around the charge of the C O C, the size and composition of the C O C, and then as well as the use of a community based organization to help support and strengthen our outreach, particularly in District One, as we focus on the community, as we focus on environmental justice. And then staff would return to the city council to authorize any changes as directed for the C O C and augmentations to the scope of work at a future meeting. And so that concludes the brief presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And I will report out from Councilmember Taylor and myself. In mid-January, Councilmember Taylor and I contacted all 13 current and former members of the C O C, inviting them to a virtual conversation to establish mutual respect and understanding moving forward. On January 16th, Councilmember Taylor and I met with five members. Another two members were unavailable but expressed an interest in meeting and continuing to serve. We had a respectful, honest, valuable discussion about the past and future of CIOC. We discussed the importance of outreach when moving forward with the environmental justice and the safety components of the housing element. There was a desire for CIOC to have well defined goals with metrics and clear roles and responsibilities. So where are we now? Councilmember Taylor and I want to sincerely thank all C O C members present and past, particularly Chair Max Fennell, for their interest in and commitment to making the housing element a successful exercise that actually yields housing at all affordability levels across our city. After talking with CIOC members, with staff, and with others involved in the housing element process, Councilmember Taylor and I are now recommending that council first direct staff to return with a contract amendment for M Group to include hiring a community based organization, the CBO, with experience in Bellhaven to be a trusted outreach partner in the community. Number two, we instruct the CBO to involve in its community outreach those residents who served on CIOC and are interested in participating as well as other community members, particularly from District One. And third, we recommend disbanding CIOC as it currently stands. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for a public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I four, which is consideration of one modifications to the composition and charge of the Housing Element Community Engagement Outreach Committee. And two, the use of a community based organization to supplement the Housing Element Updates, Community Outreach and Engagement Efforts. To engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landliner or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item I four. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much. And now we are open for a city council discussion. Does anyone want to start off? Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I don't have rejection to what my colleagues have proposed, but I'm a little confused by it. It's my understanding the housing element that we've worked on, the bulk of the housing, actually, we excluded District One. But all of the outreach going forward is going to be in District One. And so I'm not, as it relates to the housing element, that confuses me because well, we're not putting housing there. So. But if you guys think there's a need, I'd just be very curious, like, I'm happy to hear it. I'm not objecting to it. I just like the communities that are going to be, see a lot of housing put in, in the housing element. Like District One is not one of them. So.
Correct. Councilmember Taylor, would you like to take this or would you like me to respond?
Go ahead, Mayor Nash. Thank you.
Thank you. So going forward, the ideas that we're going to be doing, the environmental justice component and the safety element component. And both of those have a very strong need for outreach in District One. And that is the reason, and I guess I'd also look to staff and interim city manager Murphy, if you want to add anything or Ms. Chow, please.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Nash. And I would second the comments that you made. So primarily the first part of our work that we've done in the last 10 months or so has focused on the housing element. And we have come to a point where we've issued the notice of preparation, reached some major milestones, and we'll be moving to our community meeting this Saturday to focus on housing policies and goals. And then hopefully that will wrap up a lot of our engagement directly focused on the housing element and that we can go somewhat in the dark period and to start and to draft up the housing element so that we can prepare the draft to publicly release and to also submit to HCD. So that would be coming in the next month or two. And during that time, we will also then be shifting our focus to the environmental justice element and safety element, which we had put on pause to really focus on our housing element at the end of last year. And so as the mayor mentioned, the environmental justice element will have a heavy focus on District One. And so therefore having additional outreach in District One, I think will be very meaningful to the process.
Yeah, my only response is I'm not like, as I said, I'm not objecting what my colleagues are proposing. It's fine to do it in District One. The thing that just confuses me why we're just only, what was the logic around? No more outreach for the rest of the city. And that's fine. Like, we don't need to do it if people don't think we do. But if I were in the rest of the city, I would be like, but you know.
In District One, it's to go through the rest of the city, but it's primarily focused on District One.
Okay, I interpreted the comments that you indicated to say in District One. So if it's the rest of the city, that's fine. So.
Councilmember Combs.
Yes, I've not understood it as the rest of the city. And I don't, I don't think that that accurately reflects how it has been framed to this point. And this is the point I brought up at the last meeting is that it was exclusive to District One. And so here's a real world example of the problem and why I am opposed to this. So if we look at the flood school site in Suburban Park, where that project is being fast tracked, that developer wants to bring as many as 80 units and wants it to be fast tracked so that they essentially have approval at the end of the housing element. No one has reached out to that community. There is only one way into that site and one way out of that site. The city has done no outreach. The school district Ravenswood, who owns that site, has done no outreach, even though when I met with one of the school board members and the then interim superintendent, now permanent superintendent, a few years ago, I told them how important outreach would be because there was only one access point to that site. The school district has done no outreach. The developer that they are doing a long term lease has done no outreach to the community. And yet I'm supposed to sit here and rationalize to my constituents that we're going to do this extensive sort of bespoke outreach to residents and to a part of the city that see no impacts while they're being completely ignored and the city is doing no outreach. And this is the problem. And so I'm a no vote here. Because no one, and I've talked to staff, no one on staff and no one on this dais has explained to me that discrepancy. And I don't think you can. There is one project as part of this housing element in District One. It is a small homeownership project. And so don't explain it to me, explain it to the residents in Suburban Park, why they should be ignored. While there should be no outreach to them and while other aspects of the community that are seeing no impacts should get this sort of, you know, very white glove treatment. It does not make any sense. So that's my point there. I would like, since the mayor and councilmember Taylor are proposing to disband CIOC, some reasoning behind that. You said that you were disbanding it. You said you had met with some of the members. And so it would be good to understand if the recommendation is to disband it, what is the motivation behind that?
Councilmember Taylor, I'll give you first shot at this one. Otherwise, I'll take it.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Councilmember Combs, there were a few things that came up in the meeting that Mayor Nash, myself and staff discussed. One of them had to do with communication. How to make sure that communications was maintained because we saw that as one of the challenges as to why things weren't successful previously. And the other piece had to do with some of the concerns that were shared with us from the current CIOC members and then also the previous CIOC members, the ones that resigned. And so we made this recommendation based on the feedback that we heard. So that's one piece. The other is going back to the environmental justice piece and the safety element. I believe there was something in the RFP that explained why the, it was needed. But I think one of the biggest challenges here is after the resignations of the two District One CIOC members, there wasn't anyone there to represent the area. And so there has to be, there has to be a representative there. And it's not that any one area of the city is getting more attention than the other. But the fact is, the environmental justice piece was a priority in this area. And so without anybody participating in it, it makes it difficult to actually get the input that's needed. And Mayor Nash, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
No, I think you did an excellent job. Well, I guess I will add one thing. And that is that the idea of disbanding the CIOC is to move it under the CBO and any members who are interested in continuing to participate within the CBO so there can be a more comprehensive approach to outreach. And I believe I actually will turn to Ms. Chow to talk about the outreach continuing on the current housing element and actually the housing portion of it, which also will, which is somewhat separate from what we've been talking about, which is the environmental justice and the safety element. I agree that there needs to, you know, there needs to be more outreach. I have also heard that about the suburban park and what is happening with the possible housing on, at Flood Park. And yes, there needs to be outreach throughout the city as this moves forward. And I think that one of the pieces is on Saturday, there is a community meeting that staff is running to do exactly that and to keep the communication open and the public updated. Ms. Chow.
Thank you. Yes, certainly the communication lines with staff are always open. We are having the meeting this Saturday. Hopefully, all of our residents here, business owners here and occupants here in the city have received a newsletter that landed hopefully, if not this weekend by now, which provided an update to about the housing element. So identified the sites that were identified as part of the city council's discussion last December. It's really an opportunity to share what work has been done to hopefully pique some interest in the process, especially with the site and a potential housing opportunity sites and land new strategies. And so that will be part of the conversation this Saturday. And so that is not intended to end outreach and engagement on the housing element, but we do need to focus on, on the environmental justice and safety elements. And so that has been part of the larger conversation that we've been having the past few meetings on the charge, the future charge of the CEOC. But we'll continue to, with our project teams, with the M group, with our community engagement manager and staff, we'll continue to do our outreach on the housing element as milestones are reached. Or to help identify upcoming milestones so that members of the public can participate.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chow. And Ms. Chow has provided that explanation or a similar explanation, probably even more in-depth to me in an earlier call. I appreciate it. And I do appreciate that the environmental justice element is a specifically called out piece of the larger housing element. For me, though, it's still, not everyone is similarly situated when it comes to the impacts of the housing element. And I don't think that I can support a system that doesn't identify that and doesn't seek to, again, there are some sites that are identified that have buildings on them, of which the probability or likelihood of development is slim. And if it does happen, it's probably going to happen near the end of the housing element. There are some sites, a very few, but there are a couple that are essentially vacant and have been sewed or in the process of being sewed in a way of which suggests that they will be developed as soon as possible. And so for me, if we have a process that doesn't identify those parcels of which development is, is, is very, very likely to happen very, very soon and where you have applicants saying that they want to essentially track their application with the housing element itself. If we're not sort of identifying those situation and identifying those residents who are going to be impacted by them, then I don't know what we're accomplishing as far as making sure residents are informed. Again, not everyone is similarly situated in this situation. And so if there is a scenario where we're saying we're going to specifically hire an organization to do outreach in connection to the environmental justice element, my question is, why can't we specifically hire an organization to do outreach in connection with the residents who are going to be most impacted by those projects that are being fast-tracked?
So you are saying that you actually would like to have a second or you would like to make sure that there is outreach to citywide to ensure that all impacted residents are communicated to?
I would like an identification of those few projects that are prime to be developed in conjunction with the housing element. And there are not a lot of projects or not a lot of parcels that are in that position. And so to identify them and to specifically target outreach in connection with them. That's what I'm asking, because those people will be impacted. Like, if you even look at, for instance, SRI, like, right? And that is a project that's coming along, although in that case, you have a developer who has done a number has made a number of efforts to reach out to residents impacted. When it comes to the Flood School site, again, no outreach, no outreach at all from the developer or the school district, even though they have very specific ideas in mind for what they want to do with the site. And so who's going to do that outreach? And a citywide outreach doesn't get it because, you know, someone in West Mellow is not going to be impacted in the same way that the residents in Suburban Park are by a project that we all know is going to happen. Because it's being transferred in a way, it's being transferred from the school district to a developer, to a housing developer, and it is currently vacant. So that's going to happen. Safeway may happen, may not happen, but there's a lot of dominoes that have to fall for that to happen. And so I think that that has to be identified and we have to reach out to people based on that. If we are doing this select outreach, which is happening again in connection to the environmental justice element. But again, we don't have to, that's just where I'm coming at. So obviously, I'm not going to be making a motion here as it currently looks as though we're headed. But I just want to understand, make it clear where my opposition is coming from on this issue.
City manager, Murphy, would you like to, it looked like you wanted to comment?
Thank you, Mayor, for looking to me. Yes, happy to kind of attempt to contribute that as I am understanding the points identified by Councilmember Combs. If the council this evening was interested in providing direction in terms of some additional targeted outreach as part of the project, that could be part of a motion or motions that the council provides this evening as we return back for the contract amendments and augmentations that we've identified. So I think what was most resonated the most with, to me, from what Councilmember Combs was saying is the, if we're able to identify some of the criteria for those specific sites, that's what I think would be most impactful in terms of the outreach that may be desired. So it's, because I don't believe we could necessarily identify outreach for, I'm just looking at the map that was in the newsletter that hopefully hits people's mailboxes or has, it would be challenging to try to do that for every single site. That's the criteria that Councilmember Combs was starting to identify. That would be helpful.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I think if we identified and said that we wanted to do outreach on sites where someone has contacted the city, where it's not just a site that we're saying is feasible for the future, but there's, but there's, there's an applicant who's has made some level of contact with interests. So it's beyond just feasible, but foreseeable in the immediate future. And because the housing element actually approves that zoning and puts it in place, we probably should do some outreach to make sure that we're thoughtful in the passing of it with the community there. Does that make sense?
I guess what I'm thinking of is also just SB 330 essentially fast-tracks a lot of these projects. So it seems to me that it might be worthwhile having some sort of consultant who works with us to do outreach citywide in cases like this, as well as the housing element itself and just the impacts, which I think are, more outreach would be good.
Yeah, I mean, specifically, when I know, I know the flood site is a part example, one of the things I keep hearing is access to the site. Like, having those things rise up and talk about, and talk about them and address them potentially in the housing element itself, I think would be useful.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I would say one of the criteria is, my understanding is that with the case of the Flood School site, that the developers reached out with a desire to have essentially a fast-track application that matches the zoning that will be allowed by the housing element. So I would say the criteria is like, sort of expanding off of what Councilmember Mueller offered is, is an applicant who has reached out to us and expressed an idea, a desire to essentially have an application fast-tracked or essentially to have an application in process for approval at the end of the housing element.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was trying to get to. And the reason why is, look, we may wait at the end of it, there may be a council vote, there may be a split vote. But to the extent that through the housing element, we are working on trying to, you know, trying to make sure that we're working out the kinks, right? Like, so imagine a scenario where some number of council members are going to support a project to be included in the housing element. It's looking like a fast-track project, some number of council members aren't. Regardless, if we can use the housing, the outreach portion of the housing element process to try to figure out what the impacts of that project are to mitigate as much as we can so that if it is passed, we've addressed residents' concerns the best way possible. Does that make sense to everyone? So as an example, you know, so example with this site is, the question is like, do you, you know, so there's a question of, all right, I don't want to get too far into it because I don't think it's, I don't think actually for the Brown Act I can. But let's imagine that you decide you want to try to access this site for this school site by connecting on the backside of the road as an inner flood park to alleviate traffic that flows completely into through Suburban Park. So things like that, that we can sort of look at when we're drawing, when we're looking at the housing element and we pass that zoning. There's some mitigations that we can try to put in if the council decides it wants to pursue that site. And I'm not just, I know how charged this is. I'm not saying councils, I'm not saying council's doing anything except trying to get our housing element done. But I think there is opportunity to have conversations with the public, residents, and applicants to try to figure, figure out as much as we can for those fast, for applicants who are looking for fast-track projects at the, when the housing element is approved.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I just wanted to follow up that I am supportive of Councilmember Combs' request. And then also I'll follow up on my other comment during the council member agenda, future agenda items. Thank you.
I guess my request would be that it's not specific to a project, that it is citywide and includes this project, but would be able to, that this would be a consultant that would be able to address other projects as they come up and basically be an asset to, I'm looking. Councilmember Mueller, go ahead.
Mayor Nash, I'm sorry. I wasn't trying to like go off any bilingual, which I was actually just, my ear itched. These masks are driving me crazy. I didn't have anything to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I guess I would just like to see it as something that's not specific to a project, but is, can handle projects as they come up and need more outreach.
I think my, if, I'm not objecting to that, but I think that what I want to call out are projects that fit certain criteria, which I believe suggests that they are likely to happen and happen relatively quickly. And so wherever they are in the city, then that's fine. I'm not, I'm not saying that like, let's just do a Flood School site plan, but I do think that there are certain criterias that suggest in that situation that there should be additional outreach effort. If there are other projects that, you know, are in that same vein, then I have no objection to, wherever they are in the city, to us also sort of making an effort to very specifically reach out to the residents in that area.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I mean, more outreach, good in general. And I think there's a spectrum here because my understanding of the housing element is that pretty much all the sites have to have, you know, be likely to redevelop in order to, or be, you know, that's the whole exercise. But there's a, we're zoning, we're identifying the sites. I get, I get that. I mean, that's how we get a compliant housing element is we have to show, I think, substantial evidence that, at least for the affordable sites, that they're likely to redevelop. So then it just becomes, well, I don't know if we're going to identify the ones that are likely to develop in the first two years versus within the eight-year cycle, which, or the ones that wink, wink, nudge, might not redevelop. I don't, I don't know how we identify that and create that criteria. I mean, I get the, I get the idea and the intent behind letting people know what's going on. But I don't know how to develop an outreach strategy to get to that.
But if I could, don't you identify it by letting the applicants identify themselves? By letting those parcel owners say, I am, and so it's not a wink, wink, nudge. It's just that they're all opportunity sites. But there are some applicants who are reaching out to the city, saying that they are tracking and want to track their application to the housing element. And so that, I feel that that's a clear distinction. I don't think it's murky at all. And that that is different.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I just, I know it was tongue-in-cheek, but I think we should try to refrain from saying things like wink, wink, nudge because I think the city's really working really hard to comply with the housing element.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean anything by.
Yeah, no, but I just.
Retract that.
Yeah, I just, yeah, and I know you didn't, but I just, like, we're really, like, right now, I know the city staff and everybody, and we're all working really hard on the housing element, but I also think that they're charged, so. So I just want to make sure that that impression isn't given to anyone.
Yeah, I apologize for stating it like that. I just know that there's a spectrum of developers that have come forth, like, sites that are ready to go tomorrow versus sites that, you know, we hope will develop, but, you know, there's no certainty.
So it sounds like we can all agree that we need more outreach, that outreach is good and that there's specific projects that will need outreach immediately. And I guess one, what would you like to see from council on this?
Let's see. So I think at the end of the day, specific to this topic about the additional outreach, because we still need to cover the other items as well. So if there's ultimately going to be a motion to provide the direction this evening, I mean, the council's not actually taking action on any of these items tonight. Everything requires us to come back, whether it's disbanding the CEOC or the contract amendment. So as long as we're able to get the direction, and I can also kind of tap the city attorney if, to help in this. So there, it's whether or not there's a motion that's needed or the overall direction. So I know at the beginning, the subcommittee kind of reported out on some things. That would be one thing to check in on. But I know that Councilmember Combs identified some additional things. So I know, we just want to make sure that in total, we have the sufficient direction from the council this evening to be able to come back at a future meeting.
City Attorney Doherty.
I actually don't have anything to add. I agree with everything the city manager said.
Thank you. So I guess let me give it a try. So we, Councilmember Taylor and I had recommended three, have three recommendations, and that was to direct staff to return with a contract amendment for M group to hire a CBO to instruct the CBO to involve its community outreach with those residents who served on this CEOC and are interested in participating, as well as other community members, particularly from District One. Both of those are primarily focused on the environmental justice component and the safety component. And then, well, and then actually, and the third is to disband the CEOC committee. And then a fourth direction would be to come back with a proposal for outreach to engage the community with, in cases of the fast-track projects, which are fast-track residential projects, essentially.
I'll make that motion, or I'll second your motion. That's your motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Nash.
And I guess before we, do you need something else, something? something else, something more succinct or?
Thank you, Mayor, that was great. Thank you.
All right.
Do we need to vote, or can we just stay with that direction?
City Attorney Doherty.
I appreciate the city attorney coming on, but I believe we've definitely have the intent now, so just procedurally.
The city manager is comfortable with it. I'm comfortable without a formal vote on that. However, it sounds like there's consensus. So if for the record, you want to take an informal vote, then I think I am comfortable with that if the city manager is as well.
Let me just ask for the record, what is the reason not to formalize it with a vote? Okay. Let's go ahead and formalize this with a vote, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Nash and a second by City Councilmember Mueller to one, direct staff to return with a contract amendment for the M Group to include hiring a community-based organization with experience in Bellhaven to be a trusted outreach partner in the community. Two, instruct that CBO to involve in its community outreach those residents who served on the CEOC and are interested in participating, as well as other community members, particularly from District One. Number three, disband the CEOC. And number four, direct staff to return with proposals for outreach to engage communities with fast track residential projects. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote. City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison?
Yeah.
Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next, we go to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our informational items, J one, city council agenda topics, or J two, release of the downtown market study, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment and our informational items, J one and J two. And our first speaker will be Adina Levin.
Good evening, city council members. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident on Complete Streets Commission, but speaking for myself. And with regard to city council agenda and things relating to the housing element coming forward, I I have a comment that related to the previous item, but not something, but something that 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 came up in the discussion about how that work will proceed in that this the city council is seeking community outreach about housing developments that could potentially be developed in the near term and targeted at residents in the neighborhoods where that development is. And I would hope that that outreach would also go to community members that would potentially benefit from the housing. You know, in particular, one of the sites that is being considered, the housing is being considered for affordable housing for people that are in the nearby community or work in the nearby community and in general. You know, with the housing element, since the goal is to have housing for people at all income levels that can benefit from people, for example, who can work in Menlo Park but can't afford to live here, I would hope that our outreach strategy includes people who stand to benefit from the housing and not only to to people who have concerns about the housing. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. And so now will be the final call for public comment on our informational items. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any city council questions on any of the informational items? All right. Next, we have the city manager's report and we have interim city manager Justin Murphy here for that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to highlight two things. One, briefly, just to reiterate, reiterate that hopefully people have been receiving the second issue of the Housing Element Update Newsletter in Spanish and in English. And in the center, there is a map of all the sites that are being contemplated for our Housing Element Update, and this is is a precursor for the community meeting that's scheduled this Saturday, February twelfth from ten to noon. And additional information is available on the city's website. You can go to menlopark.org backslash housing element, all one word to get information and to subscribe for future updates. So then I would also like to provide an update on the city's website update. As you know, the the there was a major initiative to launch the new new webpage. So the new content continues to be published on our new website at beta.menlopark.org. The previous website, menlopark.org, will remain up for approximately the next eight point five, eight and a half months. There are currently approximately 1,000 published pages on the new new website. So we do have some additional analytics. Happy to provide this to the council with a follow up email, but the monthly page views have climbed 154% for January 2022. Monthly users have climbed 130% for January 2022. The average session duration is just under two minutes, one minute, 50 seconds. Average time spent on a page is one minute, 20 seconds. Sixty-five, sixty-seven percent of users access the site via desktop and 32% via mobile. So in terms of some next steps, by the end of February, we planned several additional initiatives. One is to begin regularly scheduled ongoing website user training. The target is to include 50 users in the first session in early March. Approximately 20 residents have already indicated interest in participating, so provides a great opportunity to get focused feedback from our our users, our customers, our residents, and then begin to publish monthly analytics data for the site. So a lot of work is in place to make this transition successful and to build out the the new website. So just want to provide the council and the community with that update. And that's it for my updates this evening.
Thank you very much. Are there any council member reports? I believe Councilmember Taylor, you had said that you wanted to. You had a report.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I'm reporting out that the San Francisco Airport Roundtable is having a special meeting this Thursday, February 10th, from 5:30 to 6 regarding the night hush. And that is a change of how planes will travel over the area between the hours, I believe, of 1:00 AM and 5:00 PM. That is this Thursday at 5:30, and I will share the slide presentation. It's only three pages with the city manager. My second report out is that I have an SBW. Am I getting my acronyms mixed up here? I have a C CAG meeting this Thursday from 6:30 to 9:30. So hopefully, the SFO Roundtable meeting will actually be 30 minutes. And then the last is that Vice Mayor Willison and I are meeting with some community members that are concerned about access to high quality education next Wednesday. And I wanted to find out if the two by two for education covers just high school or is it high school and elementary?
Does anyone have an answer to that question?
I think either side, I don't think of it as limited.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, do you need any other information?
That was my my only question and just as a follow up, because this happened with Tides High School. Community members did not feel informed as to what what was happening with the property there. Is that with the two by two, just to have regular communications with the school district? Because these topics will come up. That's my comment. Thank you.
So I have a report out from the last PCE meeting, Peninsula Clean Energy meeting. Just there was an update that I thought was worth sharing on a very popular e-bike program. In July 2020, there was a program where $300,000 was put forward for e-bikes for low to moderate income customers, residents, and actually customers, PCE customers. And it was very popular. It sold out in days and 276 bicycles were sold as part of that program. Twenty-one of that of those were in Menlo Park. And the customer satisfaction with the e-bike program and with the e-bikes is 93%. It's incredibly popular. This program has actually reduced the car trips for those individuals by 38%. And the e-bike is now the primary use for one in six families there. And PCE Peninsula Clean Energy is having another round of this program where another $300,000 is being allocated for another round of e-bikes. And this time, they will also include cargo bikes in that so that people can move families around and every, whatever is necessary even more easily. And again, this will be for low to moderate income. There also was some discussion that at some point, it would be nice to see if we can do something for the broader community as a whole. So anyway, this is, it's a really exciting program. And I guess one other piece of it is one of our, one of the suppliers, one of the stores is downtown Menlo Park. And it's, so we're getting benefit that way, too. Thank you. Any other reports? So I guess the final comment before we adjourn is that the next meeting will be on March 1st. And this is rescheduled from our February 22nd meeting. In March, we will have three meetings. March 1st, March 8th, and I'm looking for some help on the last one. March 22nd. Thank you, City Clerk Karen. All right. There's nothing else. We are adjourned. Thank you.